Welcome to the April 21st, 2020 Board of Commissioner meeting. Please sign at cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas are located at the back of the chambers. If you wish to speak today, the speaker request forms are at the back of the bookcase. Please give those to Ms. Holly at the left of the dais here. Next, we'll have a moment of silent reflection and pledge allegiance by Highway Superintendent Joe Miller. Next, we'll have the review and approval of the agenda.
Madam Chair.
Oh, Commissioner Drews.
I would like to add after, actually, under number 18, I believe, I'd add for a authorization for a temporary unbenefited FTE for emergency management.
Would be items under the chair, number 18A, adding temporary FTE for emergency management. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda with the addition?
Do we need to add Toby under?
Nope, he's just calling in.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Motion, please.
Move for approval.
Motion by LaCroy, second by Drews. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Consent agenda, Ms. Holly, five through 10.
Good morning, Commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and a vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of April 7th, 2020. Approval of the minutes from the special meetings on April 3rd and April 10th, 2020. Number seven is to approve the operating transfers from the general fund to the following budgets. E-911 Fund in the amount of $399,964. Emergency Management Fund in the amount of $64,423. And Fire Administration Fund in the amount of $5,579.50, which is for the first half of the 2020 budgeted operating transfers. Number eight is to acknowledge the disinternment permit, number 1335408. Number nine is approval of the second quarter 2020 local emergency planning grant submitted by emergency management. And finally, number 10 is to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of March 2020 for human resources and fire administration.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. At this time, is there any members of the public who wish to remove any items from the consent agenda, five through 10? If not, at this time, is there any Commissioners who wish to remove any items from the consent agenda for further discussion, five through 10?
Madam Chair, number 10.
Number 10 from DeSanto. Now, can we have a motion to approve, five through nine?
So move.
By Ross Connect, second by Drews. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 10, Commissioner DeSanto.
I just wanted to give some special recognition to the volunteers this month, considering COVID-19, what's going on, their exposure. To continue to come and volunteer for these particular positions is very admirable, and I thank them greatly for their help. And it's quite a large list. I'd say well over, probably close to 100 volunteers. So, thank you, volunteers.
Thank you, Commissioner DeSanto.
I'd move for approval.
Moved by DeSanto, second by Drews. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Number 11 is a lien release request. Attorney Tina Hoag. Come on up, ma'am. No, we're good.
Thank you.
Just your name, ma'am, and then speak into the speaker if we could.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Tina Hoag, and I'm here on behalf of Monique Newcomb. She's requesting a lien release of her property. I have submitted documentation to the Commissioners. I do have a couple supplemental pieces here for your review and can either do a recap or answer questions for you.
Okay, we'll just have you answer questions if that's okay, Commissioner.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews?
Would you just go through and explain what has happened here?
Yes, gladly. My client sold a piece of property at Pine Cliff Circle in May of 2014 on a contract for deed for $110,000. The buyers, Dustin and Jessica Eek, put down $950 at the closing or at the signing of the contract for deed, and then they were supposed to make monthly payments of $977.17 per month. They, I do have the Old West escrow list of their payments that were made, and I can submit that to you. They never did make payments timely over the entire amount that was due. My client tried to work with them extensively for over four years. They kept going backwards, and finally, in February of 2018, she sent a notice of default, and there was a voluntary foreclosure. They were really upside down on the property. It wasn't worth what they owed, and there was a cancellation of the contract. And then in March of 2018, a deed was transferred, transferring all interest back over to my client. The Eeks never did have full title. It was just purchased on a contract for deed, and there was really never any equity. So the two liens that had attached to the property prior to the transfer in 2018, there would be an interest there if there was value over what they owed, but there really isn't. So I have, I have the Old West escrow payments, and I have a recap of the amount that was owed with late fees and attorney fees, and then I have the value of the property. I believe back in 2018, it was listed at $87,400.
Ms. Hoag, what would you, what was your intention today for us to do?
To release the liens against the property.
Madam Chair.
But what we were gonna, excuse me, Commissioner Drews, were we gonna leave the liens on the two people?
Yes.
And just put the, take the property off?
Right, it does not, it does not distinguish any liens against the two individuals. It just clears the property, which is in Monique's name.
And keeps the liens on the two people?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Drews?
Madam Chair, I just want to clarify that the property owner themselves didn't have anything to do with owing on these liens, and so I would make a motion to release the liens.
I'll second that motion.
By Drews, second by Ross Connect. Discussion? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Hoag. Okay, next we're on item 12A.
Hold on, Deb.
If I might, just for clarity purposes, I should have ran up here quicker, but I didn't want to have more than one person's podium. The motion was to release the liens. I would prefer if it says to release these particular liens from that property. Because you're not releasing the liens from the people, nor are you releasing the liens from any further property that they, after acquired property. So I don't want just a blanket, "Release the liens." It should say, "Release these particular liens against that specific property."
So Jay, it's to move to release the liens recorded at DE, the two individuals, in the amount of $2,143.7, and JE in the amount of $240, from the property located at 13065 Pine Cliff Circle, Rapid City, South Dakota. The lien shall remain in place against the individuals.
Fair enough.
I do have, there were two liens that were recorded prior to the property being transferred, and there were four liens against the two individuals after the property. I didn't get an O and E from that date forward. I would expect the title company wouldn't encumber them, but any liens that were associated with Dustin and Jessica Eek against this property would be my request.
And Monique Newcomb has no liens other than that?
No, not Monique, I mean Dustin and Jessica Eek, I'm sorry. Any liens against Dustin and Jessica Eek that encumbered this property, that they be,
they be held responsible.
Right, yes.
Those liens be released against this property.
Yes.
That's, Madam Chair, I think that's the motion that you just read.
Correct.
And I'm fine with that, it was in writing. Who seconded that? Whoever seconded that, if they were in agreement with that.
Ross Connect, you were?
Right.
So Karen, did you get it?
Yes.
Okay, so Jay, you satisfied with that?
Yep.
Sorry, we should have read the motion, thank you. All right, item 12A, FY 2021 Pennington County Budget, CPI and new growth figures presented. Ms. Cindy.
Good morning, Commissioner Cindy Muller, Pennington County Auditor. As I noted in the memo that you have, we did end up 2019 a little bit better than we had anticipated when we were going through the 2020 budget process. With the cuts that we've made, the 10%, well, we didn't get to 10%. So now my numbers are a little bit skewed, and I didn't go back and re-figure that. But that will help increase our reserves at the end of 2020, which is our main goal.
Okay.
So what we're looking for today is direction on how you would like the departments to go forward for the 2021 budget and preparing that.
Ms. Cindy, we did have our working session last Friday, and we do have three motions as of today. Board, if we'd like to discuss, or everybody has those motions. It's the first three on there.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews?
I would, I would make the first motion, which would be to utilize the Gallagher seven-step wage scale, moving employees to the next step, they would receive an increase in pay.
Okay. Been a motion by Drews for the Gallagher, I'm sorry.
Seven-step.
What Gary said, Lloyd and McCroy is the second. Okay, any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews?
I really don't have discussion, other than the fact that we did have some various options here. It seemed to me that the, most of the department heads, as they expressed interest in it, were in favor of the seven-step. I certainly didn't have any objection to that, so that's why I think, part of the reason that we decided last week that that was probably the best move.
Right, so it'd bring, bottom line, and where's John? John, you want to explain that a little bit, just so the public and our department heads are understanding where we're going? Thank you, Ms. Cindy.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Morrow, Pennington County Human Resources. So, as I'm understanding the motion, the Gallagher seven-step wage scale actually is the seven steps to midpoint, by implementing that process, then also bringing employees to the next closest step to their existing pay. I will work with the departments to actually make sure that we get that information, and we will work through estimates as far as actual costs based upon that motion. But what it will do for us is actually get us on a different pay structure, one that will likely be more sustainable and also be seen by the employees as easy to understand. The big change that we have here with the Gallagher study compared to the one we had prior, previously used, is this one is based upon decision-making authority, where the one in the past was based upon other job categories within those positions. So I appreciate the motion, I think that will work fine.
Thank you.
Commissioner DeSanto.
John, could you also explain, we're, I believe our goal is to move into the matrix over a period of time, so we're choosing option two, seven-step, moving into, want to talk about that a little bit?
You bet, so thank you for that. The matrix piece of this compensation structure is related, then, to individual performance characteristics of every employee. It'll take us a year or two before we get to that point where we're fully capable of doing that. We have to have, first off, we have to have the compensation structure approved, which we're working on here today. The second piece is actually establish a performance management system for all county employees. Once we have those two pieces in place and have a comfort level, if you will, with both, then we're actually able to transition over into the matrix piece. The difference between a matrix piece and a regular step process is the fact that once they get to midpoint, any increases from that point up to the top of scale would be based upon individual performance for every employee. So again, much more directly related to how they're doing their job versus just the automatic steps that we have currently.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
That changes our, sorry, Commissioner DeSanto, go ahead.
It's okay, I was just thanking him.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross.
John, with that being said, then, for this to work, we have to update our job descriptions, because that's how these performances are going to be based on how that employee is working against the job description for that particular position.
Great question, Commissioner, and yes, that's accurate. Many of the departments have updated them over the course of the last year. We have several that are still working on that process. Once we have the updated job descriptions, it's much easier to actually have any kind of accountability or expectation for performance for every individual employee. If we don't tell them what we expect from them, it's hard for them to deliver that, so, yes, that's very true. Job descriptions will need to be updated.
Thank you.
We changed into the Gallagher study instead of the Condry, because you were given 2% or 1% or whatever on CPI every year, which wasn't sustainable for our budget, and then one step to every employee, and then one step for performance. And at this time, that was going to work for the years to come for our budgets and be able to sustain that for our employees, so that, and that's why we switched to the Gallagher study, am I correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. So the benefit of this process, again, it's going to be easy to understand, it'll be easy to implement, it'll be much more cost-effective, I believe, for the county as well. So as you mentioned in the past, we've had the CPI that gave us an annual cost of living, and then in addition to that, then employees were eligible for up to two steps, one an annual step and one a performance step. All told, that that added up over the last couple of years to be almost 5% a year for the last two years. This will bring that number down. I don't have the numbers with me, but it reduces that amount significantly. So we'll still see increases, employees will still see that, but it'll be much more efficient for the county.
Thank you, John.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I just wanted to clarify, too, that, you know, you're doing the steps, performance, and so the employees are still going to get that, and then we are still looking at, every three to five years, relooking at positions and the wages and so forth, and we could possibly change at that point in time to get them up to market value, so we're not just forgetting about some of that stuff. I just wanted to clarify.
Yes, sir, if I could respond, Madam Chair. So, yes, Commissioners, so this process, then, removes the annual increase based upon CPI, but it also requires that we do a market study to understand how the, the cost of labor maybe has adjusted, whether it go up or go down in our local area, and we make adjustments then every three to five years to the entire scale, which would, again, adjust up for every employee that's in the, in the system.
Thank you. Any other questions? John, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item two.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews?
Before we make a motion on this, I'd just like to give thanks to all the department heads that came forward, gave us their reductions. We appreciated that, certainly helps with the budget moving forward, and we did have some individual conversations with department heads relative to what it actually meant for them, and so I think we're ready to move forward with freezing that budget at this point in time for the rest of the year.
So your motion is operation?
I'll make the motion that our operations budgets are frozen at the 2020 approval levels that we received with the reduction on behalf of department heads.
Second?
Motion made by Drews, second by DeSanto. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Number three, please.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
This has to do with the employee levels. I'd make a motion to have the staffing level set at the 2020 approved levels.
Employees are frozen at 2020 approved levels. Commissioner LaCroy made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by DeSanto, discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I use staffing for the reason that I think at the 2020 levels, number one, is I think we did, in 2019, I think this commission and the departments did a very good job of evaluating what they needed, and we added a few, and I think the numbers for the staffing is more appropriate than saying employee freeze or new hires or something like that. I think our staffing levels is more appropriate for that. I'd be open up for discussion on that, but I think with those levels set that they are, I think that gives us a good point to start with, and if something changes, this commission's always open to discussion.
So, the employees are frozen at 2020 approved levels, meaning no more FTEs unless Commissioners decide? Okay, so people know that. And I think that's what we did already, so it's nothing different. They just have to come to us to add more FTEs or to, like, there's flaggers and there's different people that are coming up that they've used before, they have it in their budget already, so, just so we know the difference, if you need FTEs, they have to come through us for 2021, just like 2020. Cindy, did we miss anything?
Those are the three items that I was looking for, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Cindy.
And did I already say all in favor? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next run. Item 13, items from equalization.
Good morning, Commissioner Shannon Ripberger, Director of Equalization. I have a presentation here that will just give you a summary of what our total assessment is and how it changed from last year. Okay, so the, the value of taxable property in Pennington County for 2020, taxes paid in 2021, is about $11.5 billion. There are about 52,000 taxable parcels in Pennington County.
Can I ask you something?
Yes.
So you have 51,824 taxable parcels. Do you know how many owners there are that own those 51,000?
No, no idea.
I think when we did the will tax, it was like 37,000 something owners, so.
And, and that would be a different, that might be a different number. There's a, there's a difference between owners of property, owners of taxable property, and just residents. There's a lot of people that live in Pennington County that don't own property.
That's what I mean. Holly, do you know that number?
It was like 36,980-some, but I'm sure it's changed in the last four years.
About 37,000.
Madam Chair. I don't know how I would even know that number.
We looked it up for will tax back in the day.
Yeah, you're smarter than me, so.
Janet, do you know how many non-taxable parcels are in Pennington County?
No. I, I think we've got 54,000, 55,000 total parcels, so I want to say 3,000 or 4,000.
Close enough.
Now, I have printed something in the past, and I plan to do it again, a map of all of the tax-exempt property, and I print a fairly large map, or Ann does, of Rapid City, so you can actually see those parcels. It's a good pictorial representation of the exempt properties. So give me a couple of weeks and I'll have that. We have an old one that's two or three years old. Okay, so, $11.5 billion is the total value of taxable property. Last year, it was about 10.8 or 10.9. That's an increase of about 6% over last year. Okay, so our, our assessment this year is 6% higher than last year, and that is made up of almost 2% new growth. New growth is property that was not on the tax roll last year, a house or a commercial building that was just built. That's most of that new growth. So we added about $185 million worth of property to the tax roll that we didn't have last year. Then the other part of that 6% was about a 4% increase just due to reappraisal, and reappraisal can be several different things. That's adjusting our values to a changing real estate market, that's updating information that we didn't know about a property, or correcting misinformation on properties.
Shannon?
Commissioner DeSanto?
Under the new growth, can you tell us what percentage of that was residential and what percent was commercial?
These would be good questions before I get up here. Most of it's residential, but I, it would be a wild guess to guess what the split is there. We add a lot of value, commercial properties, but most of the growth we have in Pennington County is residential.
Thank you.
I thought you knew all this, Shannon. How long you been with us?
Next year.
I thought you knew everything, Shannon.
We're just giving you a hard time because we're seeing you so much this week.
Mr. Drews?
No, all I said was next year.
Next year, yeah. Okay.
No more questions for Shannon unless you ask him ahead of time?
I go a step further than the change of our assessment, and I try to measure what our local real estate market did, and this is just for curiosity's sake. So we get some statistical information from the Black Hills Multiple Listing Service here in Rapid City, and their average sold price of residential properties, which is most of our market in Rapid City, that average sold price increased about 5% last year from the previous year, and this is as of the end of 2019, okay? The average sold price at the end of 2019 was up about 5%. Then I do something else where I look at the level of assessment. We calculate a sale ratio, which is assessed value divided by sale price, and we compare that level of assessment from one year to the next, and that was up about 6%. So to just give you an idea of what our local real estate market did last year, it went up 5% to 6%.
So you did ratios, ratio analysis and percentages, but you didn't look how many parcels are, okay, just checking.
No.
You know I'm going to keep giving you crap about this.
Okay, then I talked to a local realtor here in Rapid, and I asked him what our market is doing so far this year, okay? And that doesn't have anything to do with our assessment, but just something about what we're looking at this year, and their, their listings, their number of listings are up at this time, this year, over last year, and the number of properties sold at this time is up over the same time last year, and the value, that average sale price, is up for the first couple of months of this year. Now, this virus thing, we don't know how that's going to affect the real estate market, and it obviously depends on how long it affects the real estate market, what the rest of the year is going to look like, and that's, that's all guessing there. But at this point, right now, those numbers are up, and then we all know interest rates are at an incredibly low right now, and that's prompting people to buy up or refinance and all of that.
Any questions?
Okay, so that level of assessment, I mentioned that, we, our level of assessment is 96.7% of market value. We measure our level of assessment, or how accurate we are on our assessed values, by calculating a ratio of assessed value to sale price. If a property is assessed at 96,000 and it sells for 100,000, then it's 96% of, in that case, sale price. It's assessed at 96% of sale price. And when we do that for all 3,000 sales in the county, we calculate a median, not an average, but we get a median, and we can say that the median level of assessment is 96% of market value, and that's where we're at this year. The State Department of Revenue calculates the same ratios. That's an audit of my office to make sure we're doing our job properly and to determine at what level of assessment we are. The commission actually gets a copy of that audit every year, if you wanted to look at that. This level of assessment, the whole purpose, well, there's two purposes, one, to measure how accurate we are, and then it's the basis for that taxable factor that we have, because assessed value and taxable value are two different numbers. Assessed value is market value. Assessed value is market value, taxable value is something different.
So if we told you to do lower, what would that do? Like we said, point eight-five or point seventy-five? Can we do that and what would happen? Just, just for the public to know that.
Okay, I'll get into that, and I'll talk exactly about that.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, so our level of assessment is what? Ninety-six point seven? Our taxable factor is point eight-seven-nine or eighty-seven point nine percent of assessed value. Taxable value, the number the levy is multiplied against, is eighty-seven or almost eighty-eight percent of whatever the assessment was. The Department of Revenue assigns us this factor. I suppose we have the option of picking our own factor, but that's what they give us. The point of this is, is the state subsidizes the school districts across the state. The, the school district collects property taxes locally, and the state gives the school district state aid money to make it fair. The state gives every county a factor that, that changes their level of assessment to eighty-five percent of market value. So whatever, whatever our level of assessment is, that factor will put us at eighty-five percent. The closer our level of assessment approaches a hundred percent, the closer our taxable factor will get to eighty-five. No county, probably no county, is exactly at a hundred percent of market value on their level of assessment, but if they were, taxable factor being point eight-five. If, if we wanted to keep our level of assessment low and be at eighty-five percent instead of ninety-six, if our level of assessment was at eighty-five percent, our taxable factor would be a hundred percent. That factor just changes. So we can lower our level of assessment and the taxable factor is just going to go up to compensate.
Okay, so even if we lowered people's taxable factor, again, the state's going to raise it up in order to get...
Yep, taxable value will just change correspondingly.
Because everybody says, why don't we just drop that factor, make it everybody's property lower, and then everything will be good and they'll get a better, better deal. But in the long run...
I got an example of that this year. Custer County's taxable factor is actually over a hundred percent.
Okay.
Assessed value might be a hundred thousand dollars, taxable value is going to be somewhere near a hundred and five thousand. Because their level of assessment was so low, that factor put it up where taxable value in Custer County is actually higher than assessed value.
And again, tell me if, if they're at, again, what does that do again?
If, if our, if our level of assessment is eighty-five percent, our taxable value will be one hundred percent of assessed value. If we go lower than eighty-five percent, taxable value will go higher than a hundred percent.
Okay, and the taxable value will do what?
Taxable value is what the levy is multiplied against, what you see on your tax bill. The, it is what all of the taxing entities, including the county, base their budget on. I, I assess property at assessed value, but when you look at your budgets, you're looking at taxable value. When Cindy is calculating levies, it's all based on taxable value.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ross.
So Shannon, we're at about ninety-six percent
Yes.
Of market value. If you, if this report showed eighty-three percent, then what measures would your office take? I assume, are we getting ready for a reappraisal?
Okay, so two different things there. We're looking at level of assessment. If level of assessment is low, we definitely need to raise values. But we look at some other statistical numbers, in particular, the coefficient of dispersion. The level of assessment is the median. It tells us sort of what our average is. But we want to know how spread out from that average all of the properties are. We talked a little bit about that in the meeting yesterday. We were talking about coefficient of dispersion. There's a state law that says we have to be within twenty-five percent of that median. Twenty-five percent is a ridiculous number. We're down around twelve percent. And in some neighborhoods, we're six, seven, eight, nine, ten percent. I hope we're never as bad as twenty percent off, twenty-five percent off. Okay, so when we're looking at level of assessment, we know we need to raise values. But if our coefficient of dispersion is off, we need to walk down the sidewalk and look at houses and see what we got wrong.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
So Shannon, if we used no variation at all, in other words, we didn't use the coefficient, we just used the median for everybody, why would that not be fair?
Because not every property is assessed at ninety-six percent of market value. It's measured against sale prices, and some sales are high and some sales are low. And we don't know everything about every property. So we're high on some and low on others, and we know we are. That's the nature of the, the business that we do, mass appraisal. The, the more we can reduce those percentage errors, the better we are. We don't want to be on average at ninety-six percent and somebody's at a hundred and fifty and the next guy's at fifty. That's horrible. We want to shrink that up to where everybody is reasonably close around that ninety-six percent.
So that's why using the coefficient actually makes it, makes it more equitable?
Absolutely, yep, yep.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I knew some answers there. Okay, so the last slide...
We just hope they were correct.
The last slide just gives you a history of what our level of assessment and our factors done. This, this isn't really important just other than to show you that for the last five years, we've been between ninety-six and ninety-eight percent on our level of assessment. And you can look and see what our factor does. Right now, our factor is almost eighty-eight percent, but if you go back in 2017, our level of assessment was higher and our factor was down lower. And in fact, if you go back twelve, fifteen years ago, these numbers are reversed. The level of assessment in Peyton County was about eighty-seven or eighty-eight percent, and our taxable factor was ninety-some percent of assessed value. Our, our appraisal is better now, and our factor then is lower.
So Shannon, I presume that years ago, when the governor and the legislature gave a ten percent tax break on property taxes, that that's when those numbers would have been reversed probably?
I don't know. I don't think so. I want to say that, okay? First of all, I don't know what ten percent break you're talking about, but in my job, I just go out and appraise that property and put a value on it. If our level of assessment was lower at that time, we were doing a poorer job of appraising property. What happens with taxes afterwards, happens afterwards.
Okay. Thank you.
My, my job, and I like to say this all the time, is it has nothing to do with taxes. I just appraise property, and I need to be as accurate and as fair as I possibly can. And taxes happen after that.
So let's, let's go through again. So the, the total, total amount of the budgets from school, city, and county is take times point eight-five, which equals the levy? Am I correct? When you're, you're trying to get to the levy and what it should be, right?
Okay, your house is worth a hundred thousand dollars. That's what shows up on your assessment notice.
Right.
And that's what you could sell it for. That's on your assessment notice. Then we apply the factor, which is eighty-eight percent. So what Cindy gets
Yes.
For you to look at your budget is eighty-eight thousand.
Okay.
And when she calculates the levy, she calculates the levy based on that eighty-eight thousand, and the levy owner-occupied property in Rapid City is maybe fifteen dollars per thousand. So fifteen dollars times eighty-eight will give you your tax bill.
Madam Chair.
I think, Shannon, you might, I think what you're, what's confusing you is that we keep using this eighty-five percent.
Okay, so...
And so how do we get there?
Okay, so our level of assessment is ninety-six percent.
Right.
Okay, this, this is sort of confusing. If we were at a hundred percent, we need, our taxable value has to be at eighty-five percent of market value. So if we were at a hundred, taxable value would be eighty-five percent. But we're not at a hundred, we're at ninety-six percent. So eighty-eight percent and ninety-six percent is eighty-five.
And the factor that's moving in is separate. We're subtracting from the hundred percent for and adding to the eighty-five percent approximately for.
Yep, that's right.
Until you get to a hundred percent. I was talking more about the overall totals of the budgets of city, school, and basically how they come up with a levy is adding all those, how much money we need, how much the schools need, how much the city needs.
So I...
And then taking that times...
I assess the property at market value.
Right.
I apply that factor, eighty-eight percent, before I give it to Cindy. And that's, she has then taxable values, and that's what everybody is working with after that.
Right, so the taxable value this year would be what? The one point, eleven point five billion?
Eleven point five times point eight-seven-nine.
Okay, that's what I needed to know, which equals the levy.
The levy is how much tax you want to take from that.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, right.
That's a Cindy question.
Yeah.
Shannon, just to maybe help out the public a little bit, as far as our equalization hearings are concerned, and people that are having questions about this, the best way to narrow that coefficient number, to get it below ten percent, where we're within a five percent margin, would be to allow our assessors to actually view all of their property, including the interior of the property, would narrow our, our coefficient, wouldn't it?
Yeah, absolutely. So we don't know everything about every property. Walking down the sidewalk and looking at it from outside, we can assume a lot, and we're pretty good at what we do, but there are things we don't know about property, and that's why we have the appeal processes for the property owner to show us something that's wrong.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Drews, or Ross Connect.
Can you run that slide back to that local real estate market? Now, if we would have had that handout yesterday to some of the folks that were appealing, and they couldn't figure out why their property assessment's going up, well, this would probably help a little bit, trying to have that percentage of the increase in, in market, or the, in sales for the Rapid City area.
Yeah, and, and I have put together something in the past where I've showed this for several years. Five or six percent is actually a pretty healthy increase or substantial increase. For a few years there, we were running two percent a year. We go back twelve years or so ago, we were up around seven or eight percent, maybe nine. We're not doing double-digit increases that some parts of the country were doing that created a bubble that burst. A good increase is three percent a year. This is a, this is a big increase last year.
Well, this report that shows that we're in pretty good shape health-wise.
Yeah, yep.
So when properties go up ten, twenty, thirty percent in one year, it's because you haven't been at the property for a while, or...
There, there's a lot of reasons a property assessment can change. One, our market went up, or, or went down, okay?
Right.
So that, that will change the assessment. There's something about that property that we either didn't know or had wrong. And when we do a reappraisal project and we walk down the sidewalk and we knock on the door, and we look at the information that we have, and we look at that property and we change it. Maybe somebody added something. Maybe that house is more worn out than it would typically be. That's things about that property that we either didn't know or had wrong. And that can change an assessment, whether the market changed or not.
Right, it's just for me, when you go up twenty, thirty percent on somebody, people, people, you know, even me, I budget for those property taxes. So
Yep.
They don't come until March, but that's a pretty big increase for people, so...
We talked about this yesterday. We try to manage that increase. If we get behind on an increasing real estate market, we play catch-up, and then we have bigger problems with what you're talking about. We, we want to keep up, and we want to keep current on reappraisal projects. I mentioned yesterday, there was a time in Peyton County where property hadn't been looked at in twenty-five years, and we don't want to go back to that. We want to keep up on a changing market, and we want to keep up on changing properties so we, so we can minimize some of these increases. We can't help the market that changes.
Right.
But if we can keep our, our numbers accurate, we can at least minimize that.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross.
One problem might be people just not getting building permits.
Yeah.
Building sheds, garages, major remodels, and, and not getting a building permit, so...
Yep, yeah, that, I, I get criticized all the time for adding something to the tax roll and a big increase, and that addition has been there for five years and we never knew about it. That's a big increase in one year, should have happened five years ago. But yeah, you don't get a building permit, and we show up a few years later, something's going to change.
That's true, and I forget about that, because in the county, we find that all the time, where they built another barn or
Yep.
Another house or made a barn into a house. I never thought about that, but that's true, because we have that all the time coming in, and they forgot to get the building permit, so true statement. Any other questions for Shannon? Not? Item thirteen, Ms. Shannon, the abatement, please.
Okay, so I have an abatement request before you that comes from my office. This is an owner-occupied issue. Property owner deeded the property from husband and wife to wife. The property was classed as owner-occupied before. The wife is still in the property. The certificate of real estate value was marked to continue the owner-occupied classification. This is one of those circumstances that trip up our automatic process. Looked like a sale to the computer. It's not a sale. It was husband and wife to wife. She stayed in the house. It should have remained owner-occupied, so I bring the abatement request before you.
Move to approve.
Moved by Ross Connect, second by Drews. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
Item fourteen is items from Highway Department, Superintendent Joe Miller.
Good morning, Commissioner Joe Miller from Penning County Highway. First up here, some hiring requests to replace some people that have left us and are seasonal flaggers. Flaggers, their current wage this year, just for, for numbers here, thirteen dollars and eighty cents an hour. We currently, we hire four flaggers each year for our oil injection machine and our deep patching crews. The oil injection crew is four people, two of which are flaggers. To keep that crew safe, deep patching is, on average, five people plus the two flaggers. The flaggers are very crucial to our production and our, the safety of our workers out on the roadway. Three of our flaggers are returning. We'll need to hire an additional one. We'd like permission to advertise and, or re-advertise for that. We only got two applicants. I think the, the last go around, so I think if we re-advertise, we hopefully get a lot better applicants. We started our oil injection patching crew this week with some of our, our other crew members that are slated to do other things here later this summer, so... The flaggers that are returning, years of experience, are between eight and sixteen years, so we've built, the oldest, the longest returning one has been there for sixteen years. The, the middle one is fourteen years, and the, the one that's returning the least amount of time is eight years this year, so... Got some pretty outstanding flaggers that return every year for us, and they do a good job, so...
So Joe, this was already, this won't add to your ten percent cuts, you've already had this in the budget?
Yes, this has all been in the budget. All of these requests today were all in the budget. The next two will actually save us money over our ten, above and beyond that ten percent, so...
Madam Chair, I would move to approve.
Sir.
Moved by Ross Connect, second by Drews. Any questions? Not? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries.
Okay, the next one is up for the new Underwood Division Maintenance Worker. So currently, the foreman in that division is retiring May fifteenth of this year. We started the promotion process back in October. We sent a guy, we did some internal interviews. I think we had five candidates from internal, chose a candidate, we then transferred him out there. He's been working out there underneath that foreman since late October, training, learning the ropes, learning the, the landowners, and, and learning what it means to be a foreman since about October. So with him moving into that... So, um, with him moving into that, uh, foreman position after, in May, hopefully, that'll leave that division with, uh, one maintenance worker. We currently have a maintenance worker that is out on a, an injury. Uh, he has been out since early February. Uh, we're not sure exactly when he's going to be able to return to full duty. So that would leave our maintenance division, or New Underwood Division, down fifty percent. So even, you know, if we get a late snow like we did last year, um, we could have trouble or if we have flooding, it's, to cut a division by fifty percent, they only have four altogether, so.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I'd make the, uh, move to authorize the Highway Department to proceed with interviews and hiring procedures of the application filled New Underwood Maintenance Worker position.
Second for discussion.
Motion by LaCroy, second by DeSanto.
Uh, Joe, just clarify, maintenance worker, you know, a lot of people might think a maintenance worker is a guy that's cleaning up the shop, but it's, a maintenance worker is road maintenance, correct?
Correct, uh, these guys do anything from operating our, our motor graders to driving dump trucks, to driving snow plows, driving tractor-trailers to dump gravel. There, there's very, there's numerous skills that they obtain through their tenure here. They can come with a CDL basically and, and we'll train them, but, uh, we've got guys, the foreman that's retiring has been with us twenty-eight years. So we've got a lot of people with a lot of range of different experience.
I ask you to explain that just because of the importance of that particular position. You know, we can maybe watch a shop, not get so clean, but we can't have no one out on the roads taking care of the roads or the, otherwise we hear it pretty loud and clear from the constituents, so.
Absolutely.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
Joe, um, using the Gallagher scale, what position would that employee be?
So it's currently at, uh, so it's a loaded question there. We're, we've actually sent in a, an appeal to John. We've reworked our, uh, job descriptions. We would like that position to be a B two-one. Currently it is at an A one-three, I believe, I believe, so, uh, we've kind of, we're working on some things and I think we've shared that with you guys to, to, to kind of make the Gallagher study work, so.
So that's a situation where we're redoing that job description for that, for that position.
Correct.
To help you when we get into the matrix system.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Joe, I, I want to thank your, I think one of the things we need to express with the Highway Department is, you know, they're very versatile. You know, the flaggers have been something that's going on for years to help get people in. It's part of the job every year and you, I mean, you expressed that you've got people that have come back for the last fourteen years. And, and that's very commendable for, for your department to have the same ones. But that's part of doing the business for the, for the citizens of working on the roads that we do that. And I think, I think, you know, with this, what you're doing with the New Underwood is something that needs to be done and we have remote facilities all over to help save taxpayers money from sending equipment from Rapid to all those places. I just wanted to make sure where people understood that.
Absolutely, thank you.
I think we do have a motion by LaCroy, second by DeSanto. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Uh, motion three.
Yep, uh, next up is our, our professional engineer, Bill Welk, is retiring approximately a year and a half earlier than he originally told us we were, he was going to, but, uh, kudos to him for being able to do that. And I think we're going to be able to make it work in our department if you allow us to, uh, to advertise and, and hire this position. Or actually, it's been advertised and we've got some applicants we just need to interview and, and get somebody in the door. Bill is actually, you know, retiring June twelfth. His wage, um, is thirty-five, thirty-one. He's at a civil engineering two, uh, the new one. We advertised for a professional engineer, didn't get, we got two or three applicants, none of which were satisfactory to the, the hiring committee, so he chose to re-advertise again for just an EIT, which is an engineer in training, so it's a step below the, the professional engineer, still has an engineering certificate. The professional engineer is something that's not necessary, um, for our line of work, but it is nice to have to have that professional engineering backing and the knowledge and, and experience. The new wage would be twenty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents an hour, difference of seven dollars ninety-nine cents. For the remainder of the year, that difference will save us about nine thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars, um, so.
Do we have a motion for number three?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews?
I'd move to authorize the Highway Department to proceed with interviews and hiring procedure of the applicant, applicants to fill the civil engineer position. Second, Madam Chair.
Motion by Drews, second by Ross Connect. Commissioner Drews.
This, there isn't any doubt in my mind that this has to be done. We not only, this is not only engineer out of transportation, but I believe this engineer also serves for our planning department at the same time, so. It's a position that needs to be filled.
Correct, there's a, there's quite a bit of, of work that comes through our office, um, from planning and zoning, looking at various different development reviews and stuff like that, so.
So, Joe, for number two on the, on the hiring of the New Under Maintenance Worker, and you already said on, on Bill Welk's position, these were also, again, um, for your cuts, you won't be adding any, uh, additional money to your budget?
Nope, we, uh, we found our ten percent elsewhere.
Okay, and the other thing we need to talk about is Bill Welk. A very good man and did above and beyond even engineering work at the Highway Department. We're going to miss Bill. He was at every meeting if we had, um, like for our committees and other things. Bill was valuable to all of our committees. He just has a, um, plethora of information, um, from his experience and always has been a very nice, kind man, so we're going to miss Bill Welk. Pretty amazing engineer.
Yes, we are. He's been on a fantastic job since I've been here and I know, you know, the, the entire time he's been with the Highway Department, he's done above and beyond, like you said, so.
How long has he been here again?
Ten years. Uh, I think June is his anniversary.
Was it?
So.
I thought he was here longer for some reason. I thought, maybe because of when I was on the city council, he must have been, I remember seeing him in our city meetings as well, so, thank you. There has been a motion by Drews, second by Ross Connect. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Next up, uh, Sheridan Lake Road reconstruction, uh, amendment request from, from Ferber. I just want to point out John Van Beek is in the audience here if you guys have any questions after I get through, uh, my stuff here. Ferber was contracted to do the survey, design and the facilitate the right-of-way acquisition on Sheridan Lake Road. They're seeking reimbursements for their funds expended above and beyond what their scope of support was. Little explanation there is, uh, right at the time, the leadership was changing in the Highway Department, um, was about the time the right-of-way was starting. So with being down, one of our top leaders, Ferber stepped up to the plate and took this on. The, the scope of support, I believe, and John can correct me if I'm wrong, but it states that Ferber will make the initial offer and then if that's not accepted, they'll turn it over to the Highway Department. Ferber chose not to do that. Um, they chose to settle these, uh, parcels and there was a hundred and twenty-four of them on Sheridan Lake Road, so it was quite the daunting task. It took us, what, a year and a half? Just a little under a year and a half, so. If, uh, if Ferber didn't do what they did, um, we wouldn't be where we are today with Sheridan Lake Road lent, um, and with a contractor getting ready to start that.
The state also gave them money reimbursement as well for this, so it's not just the county giving them.
Correct.
Money for some of this reimbursement, um, for going above and beyond, uh, the county and the state.
Correct, the, the original amendment request was a hundred and sixty-six thousand and change. Talking to John, um, and talking through, through some of this and, uh, with him, with the state, basically the right-of-way design changes and the right-of-way, uh, negotiations, if you look at the, this table in there, I told John, that's, that's on us, that's on the county. I feel wholeheartedly that that's our obligation to pay them for what they did there. The Forest Service, uh, we were actually just talking about this out in the hall. It was a learning experience for all, including the state, Ferber and ourselves. And the, the way I expressed it to John is, is we'd step up and pay for a third of that. The state would pay for a third of it and, and Ferber would, would take a third of it, so. That's kind of how you get to the eighty-five thousand six hundred and sixty dollars.
Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
I attended a video meeting with Joe and Ferber and we were on speaker with the state and they went in the great detail on the scope of what Ferber did and I echo what Joe said. If it wouldn't have been for Ferber, we would not be, the Sheridan Lake Road project would not be where it's at today, so I totally support this.
Correct, Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I'll let go of what Mr. Ross Connect said, you know, I mean, there was that period of time where we were doing some changes and, and for them to step up and move forward, that, that, it was a daunting task and, and to get it moving forward as fast as it did, we've been working on this for quite a while, so. It sounds like you guys did fair. Everybody's taking a third. I think that's fair and I just wanted to express our appreciation for getting those right-of-ways and moving this forward. The residents have been waiting.
Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
I'd make a motion to approve the agreement for services with Ferber Engineering Company Incorporated for additional right-of-way acquisition work on Sheridan Lake Road reconstruction project in the amount of eighty-five thousand six hundred and sixty dollars.
Motion by DeSanto, second by Ross Connect. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Item C?
Item C, uh, comes to you, a build grant, um, request. Box Elder has, has come to us and, and requesting our concurrence in putting a build planning grant together. This grant is, uh, to design or improve three miles of fourteen sixteen between, um, basically the interstate and Liberty Boulevard there. And then Radar Hill from fourteen sixteen to Highway forty-four. It's our, it's our opinion at the Highway Department, this is something that needs to be done. There's currently a safety project that is looking at reconstructing, uh, Radar Hill and fourteen sixteen intersection. But due to some floodplain stuff, and I think KLJ can probably explain that a little better. But basically that safety project is, is all but at a standstill. They can't obtain a, a no-rise situation with reconstructing that fourteen sixteen and Radar Hill intersection. There, there are numerous crashes on, at this intersection every year. With that being said, Box Elder, I think, is looking at, uh, quite a development going in there east of, or excuse me, west of Radar Hill, so it'll only put some more pressure on this. It's our opinion at the Highway Department that this design needs to be done at some point. And it's great that we have, uh, somebody that's willing to step up and pay for fifty percent of the, uh, matching funds to get this build planning grant, if that's what we get, so. Bob Kaufman and KLJ is here in the, uh, uh, audience. If you'd like to ask them any questions, they probably, they've got a lot more information on it.
So Joe, um, we would be a part of this, but the payback wouldn't be, we, we don't give them the three hundred thousand dollars today, obviously, because our budget can't take that, but how are you going to work the, the payback and the percentage? I know Toby's on the line, but I think, Joe, you already visited with him, so.
Yeah, it would be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or three hundred thousand over the next two years. So we could take a hundred and fifty thousand out of twenty twenty-one and a hundred and fifty thousand out of twenty twenty-two. Or if need be, three hundred thousand out of one of those years. I think that's a very achievable number for our budget. Our operating budget is around ten million dollars each year, so. To absorb three hundred thousand to get, I think it's a three million dollar design, roughly, so.
So even if the grant didn't go through, why are you still participating? Can you tell people why?
Why we're participating in this, even if the grant doesn't go through, because fourteen sixteen, it's, it's been something that's needed to be done, you know, for many years. It's just the funding hasn't been there, so with this grant opportunity, it's a great opportunity to get that out there and get it designed and get a project. Get something designed so we have a direction that we're going.
So basically, we'll get a design no matter what and then, um, Bradford on the last one.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
I just want to, uh, you know, this is another cooperative effort with Box Elder and appreciate, uh, Box Elder taking the lead on this, to move this project forward, as Joe just said. It's, uh, a very necessary project, uh, at some point in time in the future. And so we do have an opportunity to, to possibly, uh, take advantage of this build grant. And so, uh, I certainly am totally in favor of this. Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
Um, as a member of the, uh, Rapid City Metropolitan Planning Organization, we agreed to support this at our last meeting last week, so we're in, as, uh, with Commissioner, Commissioner Drews, I'm, uh, in support of it as well.
Um, one more thing, Joe, that's, I remember. So when this, um, fourteen sixteen is done and they get the grant, are they taking over fourteen sixteen or just pieces of it? Or, or have you figured that part out yet?
We haven't quite figured that out yet, but that is the talk, is Box Elder would take responsibility for that portion of fourteen sixteen, correct, Bob?
Okay, Toby, um, you are on the line. Can you hear us, Toby?
I can, hi, Chairman.
Anything to add to this, Toby?
No, I think we're good. Um, like it, like everybody said, very great cooperative effort.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
That's Toby Morris of Dougherty and Company.
Sorry.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Joe, I, I, I too agree that this is good cooperation. I think they've been working on this for a couple of years and, and the money wise, as far as the design plan, it, even if something does happen, at least we have that design plan and that, and that's very key and important no matter where you're going with this. And so, I, I don't feel it's a risk. I think it's a, a plan to move forward. We're going to have a product to show one way or another, but I'm positive that with the, the, the work, working together that we'll get through this and be able to rebuild it, so I'm supportive.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd move to approve Resolution twenty twenty dash zero four dash twenty-one, agreeing to be co-applicant for a build planning grant with the City of Box Elder for transportation improvements to Highway fourteen sixteen and Radar Hill Road. As further move to approve the chair's signature on the letter of support to the United States Department of Transportation.
Second for discussion.
Moved by Drews, second by DeSanto.
Can I?
One more thing, um, Joe, as well, is that, um, we had, ju- just for your information, Commissioner Drews and I have had many meetings with Box Elder and, and Highway Department and, uh, Toby from Dougherty and Company, just to get where we are today. And then after we had some discussion, we kind of learned about the budgets and some different areas and, and decided that we'd let Joe Miller and Box Elder, um, Bob from Box Elder, they're public works, am I correct, officer, work this out and it looks like at this time, between, uh, Joe and Bob and, and Dougherty and Company and, bottom line, this cooperative effort came about because, um, we had many meetings. We did just have a couple and say this was a great idea. We've been working on this for, what, three, four months, so. I appreciate the cooperation of, again, like Commissioner Drew said, from both Box Elder and us, we've been trying to help some of our surrounding cities with some areas that they need to move forward with, and this is just one more way to show that Pennington County is working with our cities in order to, um, move their cities, um, forward, so.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
Joe, approximately what are we spending per year maintaining or every five years maintaining that section of the road right now?
Uh, right now, there's a, there's a portion of it that's in need of a, a mill and, and overlay again. It's the, is that Westgate Road, Mark? Westgate Road where they put a stop sign in the truck, you know, the traffic comes to a stop and it's, it's pretty rippled there. It's, it's getting pretty wore out, the pavement is. Um, I don't have that number for maintenance right now. I can tell you, on average, we spend about twelve thousand dollars a year per mile on asphalt. So there's three miles, so it's six miles and, and generally, we only have one lane, so you, you can kind of do the math from there, I guess.
You bet, so around seventy-two thousand.
Yeah.
In that range, so, um, again, this cooperative effort is going to take that burden off of us and we appreciate Box Elder stepping up on that, so it makes sense to me.
Thank you, plus in the next few years, you're going to have that road more traveled than it ever has. There's some huge developments going out there and if we do nothing at this time, it's going to cost us more than seventy-two thousand.
Absolutely.
So.
Correct, and.
Bob, would you like to speak, sir?
And while.
I apologize.
While I got a second here, um, talking with Jay here, I realized after we submitted this resolution that, uh, there is no, nothing in the resolution that states we're going to go fifty-fifty with Box Elder, so we'd like an amendment to approve the, the resolution today with the amendment that Pennington County and Box Elder will split the contribution for this grant fifty-fifty.
And we know it's only three hundred thousand, right?
At this time, it's approximated at six hundred thousand, correct?
Okay.
I'm acceptable to that on my motion.
Okay, and DeSanto, you accept?
Yes.
Okay, amendment, all right. Sir?
I don't, I don't really have anything to add. Joe did a fantastic job. You know, y'all know the growth that's happening out there.
Your name, sir?
We're trying to plan for the futures, what we're really trying to do. We're trying to plan for the futures, what we're really trying to do.
Your name, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry, Bob Kaufman, Public Works, City Box Elder.
Thank you, Bob.
So primarily, I wanted to say thank you. We appreciate it.
You've guys done some really good work with us this year. We appreciate you a lot, just trying to move you ahead and get you ready for what's coming next for the B twenty-one. So also to move Box Elder, you guys have been doing some amazing work out there. So it's pretty cool to watch that progression.
Okay, thank you again.
Great team you have. Joe?
That's all.
We do have a motion by Drews, second by DeSanto. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item fifteen, items from weed and pests, Mr. Guffey. Item A.
Morning Commissioners, Scott Guffey, Pennington County Natural Resources Director. There's a, there's quite a debate going on right now in the Black Hills on what the sustainable yield is on the forest program. To better figure out what that yield is, the Rocky Mountain Research Station has come up with a GTR, a general technical report. And in it, it calls for a drop in the annual sale quality, quantity of timber in the Black Hills. That was outlined in the nineteen ninety-seven forest plan of a hundred and eighty-one thousand CCF. And it's a substantial drop of what they're recommending. And it would be devastating to the forest products industry that we have in the Black Hills currently. Black Hills is unique, partly because we have such private land and holdings within the Black Hills. So we have a lot of folks residing in there. And to be honest, I mean, it's a valuable area for South Dakota. I think it's the reason why a lot of us live here is because of the Black Hills. So. Forest industry is very vital, I believe, in the last to manage the Black Hills. The last mountain pine beetle epidemic, if we didn't have the forest industry here and the capacity, the pine beetle epidemic would have been a lot worse. Same with fires, to allow us to thin the forest, the Black Hills regenerates pine beetles of pine very well. And if we don't have that ability, fire risk is going to go up as well. So this GTR is out for comments right now. I drafted some comments on behalf of the board. I updated them. I sent, I emailed them out to everyone on Monday, yesterday morning. Hopefully you got those updated ones. I guess what I'm asking for is, and I want to point out in my memo, my original memo that was sent to the board, I had my comments off on what the forest industry contributes to the Black Hills. It's a hundred and twenty million annually to the local economy and supports about fourteen hundred jobs. So I mean, I think it's vital we see where, what the sustainable yield is. I got some issues with the GTR on some of the scenarios they're running, which has a major effect on what that sustainable yield is.
What's a GTR?
The General Technical Report.
Thank you. Just so people, I know you have.
So I went through and I pointed out some of my concerns. We also have Ben Woodke here today in the audience. He's the executive director for the Black Hills, Black Hills Resource, Forest Resource.
Sir, would you like to come up?
So I guess my ask today is, is do you allow a motion for me to submit? It, it's kind of different than what we normally submit our comments on because this is a GTR. We, it's not a formal letter. You got to do it in their form. It's basically an Excel spreadsheet. So. And those are due May one. So we, we have time to edit them if there's more information that we find out about. But these, I think these cover the main points that I was concerned with, and I've talked to Ben about it. And I also sat in, Lawrence County has a, they call it a timber committee. They met last Friday via go to call or something on their computer, and I sat in on that meeting. And they have the same concerns that we do too. And two weeks ago, there was a government, government meeting the Forest Service had that Chairman Haddock was invited to. She, she forwarded the invite to myself and Lloyd LaCroy. We sat in on that, asked some questions. And then May first, there's going to be a stakeholders, another follow-up to this. The stakeholders consist of industry, state, forester, Wyoming and South Dakota, environmental groups, and some Forest Service retired employees. The counties aren't involved in that, but my understanding is now we will have a seat at that stakeholders meeting. So look for that invite coming up. So we can voice our concerns on this as well.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Roskinik.
Commissioner of District One, this is a, a great concern to me because in my district, we have the sawmill in Hill City, which employ roughly eighty personnel. And if this comes to fruition, that would probably be one of the first of the three sawmills that Nyman's own that could be greatly impacted by this. So I'm totally in support of our county supporting this.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
I know that if Scott's bringing this before us, he's done his homework. And I too am very concerned about our logging and forestry industry in the Black Hills. And so I'll make the motion to allow Scott Guffey to submit comments to the U.S. Forest Service Rocky Mountain Research Station's General Technical Report, Timber Growth and Yield in the Black Hills National Forest, A Changing Forest, on behalf of Pennington County Board of Commissioners.
Moved by DeSanto, second by Roskinik. Can we have Mr. Bill come up as well?
You bet.
Commissioner Drews, did you have a question?
I don't have a question. I just want to make, come on, come on forward. I just want to make a statement that, you know, if, if you aren't involved in the forest industry, even though you may live in this area, you may not recognize the, the value and importance of taking care of our forests and, and doing the, the trimming out and harvesting of trees to keep a healthy forest. So I appreciate all the work that's gone into this, so that we can respond to this, the GTR. I think it's very critical to our entire area, not only in the Black Hills, but beyond the Black Hills for this too. So, thank you.
Bill, your name, sir?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board Commissioners. Thank you. My name is Ben Woodke. I'm with Black Hills Forest Resource Association.
Sorry, Ben.
That's okay. I, I'll answer to a number of things. Thank you for your interest in this and for the comments that you're approving and for taking the time for, for one being on the call, Commissioner LaCroy. Hopefully for being involved on May first as well. Like Scott said, Lawrence County has been very involved in this. They have, they have a timber committee that they've stood up for some time. And they also have a special status that allows them to comment on, on Black Hills National Forest projects as well, cooperating agency status. You know, as, as we look at the situation that we're facing right now, I'd, I'd say that we're, we're somewhat at a crossroads. And we've known we're coming to this crossroads for some time. It certainly isn't the first time that the Black Hills has been at this crossroads. If you look back to the previous epidemic in the seventies, although it wasn't as, as large, it, it got a lot of folks' attention, as, as any epidemic should. And at that time, there were decisions made by the, the communities and by the Black Hills National Forest themselves that we, we want to stave off the risk of having another mountain pine beetle epidemic. And at that time, they developed a plan that, that would hopefully get them to the point of, of not having another mountain pine beetle epidemic to that scale. And that plan essentially called for harvesting twice as much timber as what the plan calls for now. And they, to, to get that goal across the finish line, they, they actually recruited new forest products companies to the Black Hills. And they were successful in doing that. Those companies have, have gone out of business as the timber harvest levels have declined over the years. But that was how they addressed the crossroads then. And knowing that we're coming to a crossroads, there, there's been a lot of discussion for probably about five years now on what, what has happened to the Black Hills National Forest. We, we, we had the Jasper Fire in two thousand. We've had some other fires in the early two thousands. We've had the mountain pine beetle epidemic, and we've had harvest activities. And you, you put all those together, and, and there, there's been a lot of concern about, well, how much has that impacted the forest? On, on the other side of that, we, we know this forest has a propensity for, for growing a lot of wood on an annual basis. And so there, there's been an effort to try to balance all of that and a recognition that we need much stronger information than we had five years ago. And to, to help solve that, that there was a group of stakeholders that came together, our, our organization was part of them, and said, we, we need stronger information and worked with Forest Inventory and Analysis, it's another branch of the, of the Forest Service, to, to double the number of plots that they have in the Black Hills to, to, to analyze how much timber resources we have, how much standing timber, how much growth, how much mortality. And we, we supported that then, and we still support it now. But in, in theory, that, that's a very strong process to start making some decisions and having some discussions. Our, our concern is how some of that is being used. And that anytime you get a data set like that, of that size, you, you just need to take a minute and say, let's make sure all of the i's are crossed. All the highs are dotted, all the t's are crossed. And, and the, the Forest Service just hasn't done that, to be honest. And we, we've taken a look at that. We, we fired some outside consultants as well to help with that process. And, and it's, it's developed a number of questions and concerns from our end. And while the, the process itself, it still makes a lot of sense getting this data, going through the analysis, you do have to make sure that your results make sense and that your data is strong. And that, that's what we're hoping that we can do through some of the comments back to this general technical report and through some of the stakeholder meetings with the Forest Services, make sure that we have the strongest information that we have and that we're not basing some decisions on information that's faulty in some, in some place.
So Ben, who do you work for?
Black Hills Forest Resource Association. We're, we're a trade association that represents the forest products companies and other concerned individuals in the Black Hills area.
You don't, you don't sound like you know too much about timber growth.
It's, it's a hobby.
It looks like a passion. We found another Scott Guffey Junior, I think, right here.
Actually, he is a passion. And, and Scott talked about the, the jobs that are on the line, and that's absolutely true. There, there are a lot of jobs. There's, there's a lot of economy that's on the line here. But even more important than that, I mean, that, that, that's, that's why I work for it. But, but even more important than that is our capacity to manage the forest. I mean, if, if, if you've been reading headlines for a while, you've seen the headlines talking about the, the battles that we've lost to mountain pine beetle. But, but all the battles that we've won through these partnerships with Forest Service, with the counties and states, and with industry out there to do the work. And we, we want to keep that capacity moving forward. There, there's no sense that we should grow the forest back to the very conditions that started the mountain pine beetle epidemic and, and the wildfires in early two thousands. And that's, that's what's on the table as a proposal, is, is to, to grow the forest back to those conditions. And from, from our perspective, that just doesn't make sense.
I like your, your passion. You do have an assistant today? He's sitting in the audience.
I do. Yes, my son, Mitchell.
Good morning, Mitchell.
He, he's the real brains behind the operation.
Do you have a passion for, for Forest Service timber as well and timber growth?
At least he's honest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got, I've got three points. And number one is, is I'd like to, to thank Mr. Guffey for his hard work, his, his passion for, for the work that he does because he does the research and he gets in there and helps us out in the forest in every way he can. I mean, that's why he's the environmental director, and I appreciate that, Scott. You're at the discussions and you keep me informed. And I appreciate that, that. I appreciate your help on that. You know, during that meeting, I wanted to, I expressed, you know, we talked about the sawmills and some of the costs of this effects. But, you know, I spent twenty-seven years working for a company that worked with the byproduct of the sawmills, with the chips and sawdust and so forth, for making particle wood and cabinets and so forth. And it's still going at reduced levels right now. But I wanted to express that, that understanding also. But, you know, the commission reflects back, good forest management and what you guys bringing this forward. When we had that presentation of what an unmanaged forest looks like back when Deadwood started up and how we had the banger hills, we had the pine beetle epidemics that took ravage of the, I mean, we, we had nothing. And we've got a beautiful Black Hills right now. And it comes from management and from people like you and being able to coexist. We need to be able to get in there and thin and do those type of things. You know, I did a workshop in Washington with their forest industry too, and, and how they were doing the work up there. And, and you guys are not, you, you're trying to work together to make the, the Black Hills more manageable, more beautiful, and keep them sustained. And that's, that's the whole point. And because we don't want the pine beetle epidemic to ravage us again, or more huge fires that take even more. And we have to do those things and so forth to move forward. So. But I just wanted to express my, my appreciation for the hard work that both you guys are doing. Because, you know, it takes a lot of education for them to be looking and researching what's going on and keep up, update on the stuff. It's easy to, to get busy and not see it, but these guys are on it. And I appreciate that.
Thank you. We do have a motion by DeSanto, second by Roskinik. More discussion?
I got one question for Ben. Ben, I really do got a problem with this. You know, I just see we're inviting the beetle back and we're inviting forest, forest fires. But my other problem is when the government makes the money so badly, what's forty-five thousand cubic feet worth to the Forest Service if they, if they don't sell it? Because I assume they receive the income from the, from the sale. So could you equate that roughly to dollars?
Roughly. And, and I'll, I'll say that that's very dependent on what markets are doing and competition.
There's a loss revenue to the government.
There, there is, there is. And, and so I, I just want to make sure that we, we understand that there's a lot of different pieces. And it's not that they will get this amount of money every year if they sell this much timber. But until the last month or so, you know, bid rates were in the mid thirties for, per CCF. And so a CCF is a hundred cubic feet of, of timber. And so right now, the, the Black Hills National Forest has a target of roughly two hundred thousand CCF. And so if you just take thirty-five dollars per CCF times two hundred thousand, that can give you a rough idea of the revenue that they collect. It does cost them some money to put up the program. They have to, to hire employees and staff to, to do the environmental analysis, to go out and mark that timber. It's the Forest Service that marks all the trees, not, no, no industry marks the trees. So there are some costs involved there as well, but it does generate revenue in the Black Hills.
It promotes jobs because it takes those folks to go out there and do this.
Yep. And, and it's the main tool that the Forest Service has for maintaining roadways and keeping those in, in good, uh, state of repair for, one, for the public to use, but, but also to help minimize sedimentation and runoff and, and other things that can be environmentally harmful.
Last question would be how much, how effective do you think it'll be to, for the counties to, to support this?
I, I think that, I think there's a lot of support from, from all of the communities here in the Black Hills to, to keep going on this program. And, and that we don't want to be growing the forest back to the conditions that had the mountain pine beetle. How, how much the Forest Service will listen to that, you'd have to ask them. But, but, but I think anytime we can get all of our voices together and start singing as a choir, that, that's very effective.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I have one last question.
Mr. DeSanto.
Is Department of Fish and Game supportive of this? Because they should be.
I, I don't know about Fish and Game. Resource Conservation and Forestry is, I'll, I'll say not supportive of, of the, of the GTR. They have some concerns there, but they are supportive of, of the industry and of forest management and, and wanting to, to make sure that we have the best information. And on April third, when the Forest Service had their first stakeholder meeting, Greg Jostin did do a presentation and, and called it, called a lot of the same questions that we have had as well. So Greg Jostin, the state forester, I, I think there's a lot of concerns from resource conservation and forestry there.
Well, thinning the forest leads to a much more enjoyable hunting experience. It leads to less lost animals. If you miss a shot, don't hit it accurately, tracking that animal down is much easier when the forests have been thin. I've hunted in Idaho and I've hunted here in South Dakota. And I can tell you, Idaho's forests are incredibly thick and it, it's not as enjoyable of a hunt. And it's much more difficult to find your down, your down to game in that type of situation. So I, I think Department of Fish and Game should be supportive of our, our additional thinning and harvesting as well, just because it's going to make it, the Black Hills a more attractive place to hunt.
Madam Chair, if I could, I, I absolutely, I, I agree with you entirely. And if you look back at the elk management plan that they put together a few years ago, a, a lot of the assumptions that they had in that elk management plan were based on forage conditions from, from an opened up forest. They even cited the mountain pine beetle epidemic as being beneficial for elk and other ungulates because of the increased understory, the, the herbaceous and, and grass growth underneath the canopy. I think we've all been out to the forest where it's closed up on the canopy and it's just litter, you know, it's, it's just needle cast that's on the floor. And that's not benefiting a lot of wildlife. So I absolutely, I, I agree with you entirely. And a good point.
Thank you. Mr. Guffey, do you have anything else you'd like to share? Actually, Mr. Guffey is not our weed and pest guy. He's actually our natural resource director. So sometimes we put it under, I mean, weed and pest department, but.
We're in the process.
Mr.
Getting our name correctly accurate.
Mr. Guffey has a lot of different hats and it's not the weed and pest guy, so.
I'll just make one mention. Ben had mentioned that Lawrence County is a quote-unquote cooperating, cooperating agency recognized underneath the Forest Service. We are working towards that. The previous Mystic Ranger District Ranger, we were having those talks and then she left the post and there's been a couple of interim detailed in and now we got a new permanent ranger there at Mystic. So I'll readdress those talks and try to get Pennington County in that same status. What that kind of gives us is kind of an insight on comments and stuff that affect the Forest Service, NEPA decisions and different stuffs that come along. It kind of gives us a seat at the table, so.
Thank you, Mr. Guffey.
Thanks, girl.
We do have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Guffey. Thank you, Ben and Mitchell. Item 16 is disposal of proposed ordinance number 713, a temporary zoning ordinance regulating vacation home rentals.
Madam Chair, in light of the current situation caused by the COVID-19 virus, I'm respectively asking the commission to formally dispose of this item at this time. And that would be to move to postpone indefinitely further discussion and consideration of ordinance 713, a temporary zoning ordinance regulating vacation home rentals.
Second.
Motion by Ross Connect, second by Drews. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Let's do a five-minute break and then we'll do board of adjustment, if that's okay?
Yep.
Thank you. Want to make a motion for that? Oh. Move by Drews, second by LaCroy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay. We have a motion to open board of adjustment?
Second.
Motion by Deb, second by DeSanto. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. You're funny.
Morning Commissioners. Jason Thinnison, county planner. Agenda item A is variance 20-01. The applicants are Ivan and Darlene Davington, or Davignon, sorry. Ivan is in the audience, if you have any questions for him. They are requesting to reduce a rear yard setback from five feet to three feet and to reduce an east side yard setback from five feet to three feet for an existing shed. And also to reduce the west side setback from eight feet to zero feet for another existing Zoning ordinance requires the board of adjustment to ascertain that four specific criteria are met. Those are on the screen for you to review. I'll read staff's response. Number one, staff has verified through site visit that there are no particular conditions as noted above which warrant approval of VA dash, or 20-01. There appears to be adequate room on the subject property placed to sheds. Number two, this setback variance would not grant a use which is otherwise excluded from property zoning as a suburban residential district. Number three, strict application of the zoning ordinance would require the applicant to meet or exceed the five-foot and eight-foot side yard setbacks and five-foot rear yard setback requirements. And lastly, number four, granting the setback variance would allow for multiple reduced setbacks in a suburban residential district which is not in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. Also, Pennington County Highway Department is also not in favor of this variance. As it sits today, the property is zone suburban residential district consisting of .23 acres, contains a 30-foot wide platted access easement. There is special flood hazard area on the property, both 100-year and floodway. The majority of the property is floodway. As you can see here on this slide, everything in the red hashed is floodway. This small portion up here is excluded from the special flood hazard area. This property also does have county violation case number 18-0133 for buildings within the special flood hazard area without a floodplain development permit or county building permit. Contains a single-family residence built in 1953 according to Department of Equalization records. Shed number one, as you can see on my slide up there, is an eight-by-10 shed. It was placed in 2015 according to historical rapid map imagery. It does not meet the eight-foot side yard setback. There's no building permit required, but it is within the floodway, so floodplain development permit is required. Shed number two in the upper right-hand corner is a 10-by-16 shed placed in 2016 according to historical rapid map image, imagery. Does not meet the five-foot side or five-foot rear yard setbacks. There's no building permit on file with our office, but it does require one. It is also within the floodway and there was a floodplain development permit submitted to our office and approved this month. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review. Came back with a couple of comments. Again, county highway is not in favor of granting variances. The county floodplain manager stated there is special floodplain, special flood hazard area on the subject property and the majority of the property is within the floodway.
Jason, I didn't think you could build anything in the flood hazard.
You can, you just have to make sure that there is a no-rise certification from an engineer. So basically, if you, if you were to put the structure in the floodway, you'd have to show that it's not going to increase the rise of the elevation of the.
So we're voting on the 2015 shed or the 2016 shed?
Uh.
Or both?
Both of them, yeah. So this variance is to approve the setback, the reduced setback for both sheds.
And they both have the floodway permits at this time?
Right now, shed number one does not have a floodplain development permit and it needs one.
Okay. Hold on, sir. Okay. You want to come up? Just, Jason, you need to move to the right just a little so he can come up to this mic.
My name is Ivan. I'm the owner. That shed, Davis, they were, they were telling me that we had to get that approved like that, like you were saying, and I called Davis and he, he called back and said everything was approved. They sent it to him, I don't know, it was last week sometime, as soon as I got notice. And, but they haven't received it yet. She said it's, uh, she's telling me that it was approved, so.
Which shed are we talking about here?
The number, number one shed. So he, he's got it in there, but apparently the mail has to be, what do you call it?
Set aside for 24 hours.
Yeah, set her before they can read it, so they haven't got it yet.
So Jason, you verified with Brittany that both sheds have their permits then?
You didn't know that yet?
We have, we've approved the floodplain development permit for shed number two. I reached out to Davis Engineering last week. He said that he didn't have the records for shed number two, so we provided those to him. And he said that he would take a look at it. He wasn't sure if he had a record for shed number one or not. I haven't heard anything back from him since.
That's what we're talking about. And I did it and I, I tried to call you guys all, every day and they, they gave you your name and you never did call back. I was trying to tell them, I was trying to tell them that it was, because Davis had called me right back and told me that it was taken care of. But I, I tried to tell you guys, but I couldn't get, couldn't get a hold of them.
Okay. Any questions for, for Mr.?
Madam. Madam Chair, go ahead.
Mr. Ross Connect.
Jason, what? Is this application, is this just the one-page application or how involved is that application?
No-rise certification has to go through an engineer and it's got to be stamped out by a certified engineer saying that his sheds aren't going to cause that rise in the floodplain or the floodway.
And next question would be, are the sheds sitting on, how are they just sitting on a foundation, blocks, gravel?
This is shed number one here.
That's, that's on gravel.
Are they adhered down at all?
Huh?
Are they adhered down?
No, not this one. This is a movable shed, you know, they're all, they're both movable sheds, but the other one has a, uh, two footings that are, that are kind of fastened to the end of the footing, you know, which is.
Right. My only concern is with sheds, and this might not be an area, but I've seen property along Rapid Creek, when you get heavy floods, a lot of things just get picked up and move along with it and start causing problems down the road, but this doesn't look like a location where that's going to be a problem.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
I've been out and visited the property and looked at all of this and it looks fine to me. It's not going to interfere with anything. There's, the neighbors are a long ways away. There's a driveway that runs along the backside of shed number two and it's not going to cause any interference with anything that I could see anywhere.
Can you blow that up, Jason, so we could see the surrounding area? Is that just his house?
I can bring up Rapid Map here, one second.
Thank you, Jason. Then we can see the whole area where his house and the sheds are sitting.
That's the subject property there.
This shed's sitting in the.
Shed number two is up in the right-hand corner.
Rapid Map never lines up with the, the actual property lines just because the aerial imagery is a little off. The property line is actually over here. That's why on the slide I had it adjusted and actually showed that property line is right here on the edge of the shed.
And how about this back shed where there's road?
The fence lines here, they're approximately where the property line is.
Where the black line is, basically?
Right.
So is that a driveway where that red vehicle is setting or what is that?
That's the neighbor's.
Is that a driveway?
Well, it's off the driveway. See, the driveway's right next to him. It's just a parking area. See that, that's a garage. His garage is over to his left.
You have zero setback on your number one and you have three to five on number two?
Reducing the, on this shed back here?
Yeah.
It's reducing it to three feet on both sides. From five feet to three feet.
How about number one?
Two, zero. It is on the property line. You can actually see from this photo, this is the fence line that we assume is on the property line and shed even hangs over that fence a little bit. So we'd reduce that down to zero.
I didn't realize when I, I didn't have to get a building permit. That's a movable shed. I didn't realize I had a, there was a limit on, on, you know, spacing for that kind of a shed at that time.
I think a lot of people that I've learned believe that their sheds don't need building permits, so you're not the first one, Mr. Ivan. Just because they think it's just a little storage area, so it's not, I, I don't think, if it was a house addition or something, but mostly sheds, people I think have a hard time believing they have to get a building permit, so.
Madam Chair, I move to prove contention that floodplain development permits are in place for both structures.
Second.
Question by Ross Connect, second by DeSanto. Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I don't, I don't have a problem with the going from the five-foot to the three-foot, but I do have a issue with the going from eight feet to zero on that setback.
Okay. Can you look at that picture one more time?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
That, that was one of my concerns is, I was thinking about is, number one, sir, whose fence is that? Because the overhang's right above the fence, is that your fence or your, your neighbor's fence?
That's my fence.
That's your fence, so you have to do the maintenance on it and so forth. Okay, that was one of my questions.
Sorry, Mr. LaCroy. Jason, can you keep the picture up with driveway with this?
Rapid Map?
Yes.
This one here?
Yeah, just leave that there, please.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry, Commissioner LaCroy, follow-up?
No, that, that was one of my main questions because the biggest concerns I've gotten back from other property owners is when those fences are like that and somebody puts something on there, they can't get back there to do the maintenance on their own. But if it's your fence, then it's your problem.
Whose red car is that?
But.
That's a neighbor's.
The other, the other comment, I think with the, the way the property is laid out, I don't think it's going to create a problem. On the adjacent property, property, one of the notes say that the garages are already encroached on this rear setback. Is that the one that's, I'm assuming it's the one with silver?
With the silver roof?
Yeah.
That's the garage, yeah.
Through the notes.
That's a neighbor's garage.
Okay. That would be my only concern, being so close to that property line. You've got plenty of walkway there to get through on your side. I'd probably, I'm okay with the motion on the floor, but I wouldn't, you've got enough property, I would probably prefer that shed somewhere at the backyard, but I'm okay with the motion on the floor.
So Ivan, how come you didn't move it to the backyard? Are you using it?
You notice how, you notice how small that backyard is? There's no place to put it.
Like on the left corner, right there?
Huh?
The left corner?
The tree there.
Is it?
Yeah. Those are my little comments, but.
Have you had any complaints on your, your shed from the neighbors or Jason?
No, no.
Okay.
Nope.
Any other discussion?
No, we, I took pride in, when I decided to do that, I took common sense and pride in building it. If you'll notice, the, I don't know if you got a picture of that little shed, uh, see, of the other one, see? There's, there's that tree he's talking about.
Okay.
And there's a shed, the other shed in the back.
Keep your property nice.
Well, I take pride in that. And the reason I decided to put that three-foot on the back is because of the small yard and I have a gate that would fit in that area. Otherwise, I didn't even think about a side. And actually, the side that you're talking about on, on the other side, it's already five, over five feet now. It's not that, that's not the side we're looking at, it's just the back.
Yes, sir.
In a way, and then I don't have that much yard neither, so I was trying to.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other discussion, board? If not, we have a motion by Ross Connect, second by DeSanto. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
So four ayes, one no. Motion passes, sir.
There's one more question. They were telling me at the planning and zoning that they charged me $1,200 and I was supposed to ask you if I could have that $800 back. They told me that I could ask you. Now, I'm asking you. That's all they told me, that I have to ask you to get the money back. I'm paying already a hundred, or what, $400 for the, for the, the cost of this, for the fine or whatever. But they charged me an extra $800 that they said I'd have to ask you if I could have it back.
What was the total amount he had to pay, Jason, for, for his sheds and then his permits?
I don't know. I would have to go look.
Brittany?
1220.
$1,220?
But they said 800 and then $100 for that sign had come back and the rest would be for the charging for the.
Madam Chair, I'd make the suggestion that we take that up at our next meeting so we can gather the information and be well informed. I'm assuming it's penalties and fees and, and the building permits, am I correct?
Yeah. I don't think we've collected payment for the building permit with the penalty fees at this point.
Brittany?
Well, we're still waiting on the floodplain permit.
Could you clarify this for us? Thank you. Sorry, Jason.
They're going to take, they're going to take that out of that 1,200.
Jason, let Brittany talk just for a second. Hold on, sir.
Sure. There's only one building permit that's required and that's for the larger one.
How much was that?
He hasn't submitted that building permit yet because we can't approve that building permit until the variance is approved.
Okay.
So once that is approved, he did pay the 1,220 and he was advised that he could go through the commission office to request that $800 in the penalty fees.
So the 1,220, to break down the 1,220?
The 1,220, there's 420 for the actual variance application.
Okay.
Which 100 of that is returnable when the sign is returned. And then there's a double fee for the $300 for the variance application, then a $500 And then there's a double fee for the $300 for the variance application, then a $500 penalty fee. So that's the 800.
And then he has to go and get a building permit still?
For one of the sheds. The other shed doesn't require a building permit, but it still required the variance because setbacks still have to be met. The floodplain development permit is still needed for that smaller shed. I have reviewed the floodplain development permit for the other shed. That shed is actually, the ground is above the base flood elevation, so that's why those boundaries are kind of...
And how much does a floodplain permit cost?
$75.
They paid 150 for two of those?
He paid for one of those so far.
But you had to, you had to get two, am I correct, Mr. Ivan?
Right, he had to get one for the other shed.
Okay, so $150, then you paid 420 for the variance, which is $570. And 320 for what, Brittany, the...
So 300 for the penalty fee. So when you break down the fees, one is the application fee, one is for the sign, and there's $20 for the, the neighbors list, the contact list, because they have to do the notice. So the property owner's list is the $20.
Okay, so the 800 was?
The $300 doubling of the variance fee and a $500 penalty fee.
Okay. I'll just tell you up straight. How much does sheds cost?
How much does the shed cost?
Both sheds. We're gonna... Well...
That's a loaded question.
Yeah, well, that's 1,220 and then five.
Madam Chair.
Holy crap.
I under, I understand what, what he's doing, but I think he, the variance had to get approved first before you can request for the money back. I think to keep in the process of how, how this works, the variance gets approved, he puts in his request with, with the commission office that he'd like his penalty fees back and so forth. And he comes back to us on that agenda to have this discussion because I think we need to follow the structure of how it's supposed to be. The first step was to get the variance.
I think you can do it on both, Commissioner, but I think we need more information. You're right on the totals again. And I'll just say, sir, I understand, and I'll keep saying this, guys, when you do sheds, I think, he's not the first one. In fact, a lot of people, even in the city, will call me and ask, can we build a shed? And I said, depends on what size. So people really don't believe when you put up a shed that you have to get a building permit. So if this was an addition or something else, I could totally understand, but we're talking about some sheds that people just think they're going to put the lawnmower or something in. So just to keep in mind, but again, I'm with Commissioner LaCroy. So Ivan, if that's okay with the board, we have Ivan come back. And then you can come back at the next, am I correct, Jason, to ask for some leniency?
Right, that'll give us time to itemize the receipt.
Yes, sir. Is that okay, Ivan?
Yeah, whatever it takes.
It would, it would work a lot, a lot better so we can kind of have that detail before we decide.
Okay, do I have to have a detail or anything, or do you just...
Jason will help you.
Okay.
Okay, so today, your variance was approved. So you can come back next time and we'll talk about those fees, sir.
Thank you.
Have a good day, sir. Next, we'll have the close of the Board of Adjustment.
Move and close Board of Adjustment.
Moved by DeSanto, second by Ross Connect. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Item B, regular agenda.
All right, Agenda Item B is for Jeffrey and Holly Godber. His layout plan 20-06. And they have applied for a layout plan 20-06 to combine two lots into one lot in order to create Lot 1R of Mountain Park Placer subdivision. These are the properties on the screen for your review. Currently, both are zone general agriculture district. Both contain special flood hazard area, 100-year type. Access is off Sheridan Lake Road, however, there is no permitted approach through county highway. There's no existing onsite wastewater treatment system. That, these have all gone for both properties now, specifically Lot A, the one on the northernmost portion of the screen. Consists of 1.1 acres, contains a nine-by-nine pavilion, an eight-by-12 shed, an outdoor stone fireplace. All three of these are within the special flood hazard area, and there is no special flood, or there's no floodplain development permit on file for any of those. And there's also a four-by-four decorative outhouse that is outside of the special flood hazard area. Lot B consists of 1.41 acres, vacant of any structures. There was a single wide mobile home on there, but it was removed in 2015. Oops, sorry.
You like sheds today?
Pro... Got ahead of myself. Proposed Lot 1R of Mountain Park Placer. Proposed zoning would be general agricultural district, will consist of 2.51 acres. However, this does not meet the minimum lot size requirement for general agricultural district. Therefore, rezoned and comprehensive plan amendment or a lot size variance will be required for the proposed lot. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review. County Highway had a comment stating that an approach permit will be required off of Sheridan Lake Road. There is special flood hazard area on the property. Minor, minor plot will need to contain the 100-year floodplain in accordance with FEMA maps. And floodplain development permits will be required for the existing shed pavilion and outdoor fireplace. With that, for purposes of layout plans, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request.
Okay, is there a motion or discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ross Connect.
Joe, how's that gonna, the realignment of Sheridan Lake Road gonna, I assume this is a property just before Biker Bob's?
Correct.
On the, so it's basically unimproved. I think there's a caper on there.
So through this section here, there's a little bit of reconstruction on Biker Bob's corner due to softening that curve. I think it's going from a 15 mile an hour advisory to a 30 mile an hour, excuse me, 30 mile an hour advisory speed. But that portion right there is just going to be two 12-foot lanes with four-foot shoulders, so it'll be just an overlay.
I'll make a motion to prove.
Second.
Motion by Ross Connect, second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Next is items from the chair, and Dustin, come on up, ask for your request. And then tell us a little bit.
Good morning, Commissioner. Dustin Willett, Director of Emergency Management for Rapid City in Pennington County. So, and I've been before you before with similar requests. Again, in these types of circumstances, emergency management has historically used a temporary unbenefited hiring process to supplement our staff when we get involved in, in disaster response and emergency response that exceed the, the number of hours and/or the technical capabilities that we currently have on staff. So the request before you is for one individual at, again, that $15 per hour, temporary unbenefited. And I'll be using Rob specifically for the logistics support for the temporary homeless shelter that we're working on standing up over at the Civic Center. Most of the actual staff over there are being sourced from other community partners. We've got probably five or six different organizations that are helping out with that. But the logistics piece is, is kind of a specialty piece that requires some, some, some knowledge and a, and a particular skill set. Rob's willing to, to come and, and provide that skill set and be tasked to primarily supporting the, the temporary homeless shelter in logistics capacity. That ends on...
Tell us, Dustin, a little bit more about that project so in, in general, we know kind of what you're doing again.
So the intent of that is, is basically to provide a place for symptomatic homeless to convalesce. So if any of us have concerning signs and symptoms and present to our primary care physicians, we'll probably be told to, to go home and get better. Go home, eat well, sleep, and, and, and let your body recover. This shelter specifically primarily was, was established for those who are in that category, but don't have a home to go to. So these are sick homeless folks who aren't sick enough to take up the valuable resource of a hospital room. They, they don't need to be an inpatient in a hospital, but they need a safe, secure, climate-controlled, nutritionally-supported place to go get better. And we can't bring those, those symptomatic people into our normal homeless support structures, our normal shelters due to the, again, we wanted to limit the spread of, of the virus. So this, there are other components in, in terms of some of the funding. So there's three separate populations that'll, that'll be eligible to stay in this shelter. One is the group that I just mentioned, the symptomatic. The other are those that have been identified by the Department of Health or their primary care physicians as having close contact. So with a known or suspected case. So these are the people that are told to go home and monitor themselves 14 days for the development of signs and symptoms. But they're told that by the Department of Health. It's not just a voluntary thing. It's, it's, they have been identified through contact tracing as being needing to, to quarantine themselves.
Dustin, has Sioux Falls or Rapid City had any homeless sheltering facilities that have homeless people with COVID?
Sioux Falls. Well, I don't know about inside the facility. They had a homeless individual that did test positive for COVID, and we've been in contact with them. They're, they're, they were very, very interested in where our plans were and, and, and what we've been doing. We kind of leaned forward on this. We anticipated the problem through reaching out to some of our coworkers. Our colleagues in Montana, Arizona, Denver, they all said, or not Denver, but Colorado, they all said that, that the one thing they wish they would have done earlier is address this piece. So we started working on it, so we're kind of ahead of the curve just a little bit, which, which, again, positions us very well.
Madam Chair.
Mr. LaCroy.
One question I had to have, Dustin, is, you know, we're going to have the facility made, set up for the homeless, which is a high-risk population, but then in the, in the same sense, they don't have access to, to medical. They usually don't. You know, you're talking, they need to be diagnosed and so forth. So I mean, what is our, what kind of plan do we have for screening the homeless to be able to get them, the, the physician attendants are...
So...
That they need, you know, the, the doctor visit that's going to meet those requirements.
So no, it doesn't require a diagnosis. This is for symptomatic. You have to just be showing
Signs.
Concerning symptoms. If you, if you have a diagnosis, that absolutely counts. To dress, to address more specifically your question, there, we have two large tents that are going to be placed out, basically in the Memorial Park area adjacent to the ban shell. That, that's going to be a screening and intake facility. The intent there is, when people present, we still have a lot of support structure in our, in our community. We have the care campus, we have cornerstone, we have safe beds, we have detox. And so this facility will serve to make sure we get the right people to the right places. We have some temporary housing, some hotels, apartments. So again, the shelter that we're setting up at, at the Civic Center is very temporary. It will stop operation on, on June 26th. And it's kind of a, I don't want to, be careful with the terminology for the connotation that it, that it can engender, but it's, it's the last option. It's the last place we want to put somebody. If there is a better place in the community to take care of those individuals, then we'll work hard to get them placed in there. If there's no other option and we need a place to put them that's better than in the streets, that's what this facility is for.
I, I appreciate that because I think there's a lot of talk on what the requirements are and so forth, but just showing sys, you know, systematic causes and effects and the screening. I understand the care campus does great screening, and they're going that route. But the tent and stuff, I think, is a good, good point too. So having that tent set up, is there some other, what kind of processes in place that would be inviting for, for the people to come up and, and get screened?
I'm not sure I followed the question.
You know, you're, you're talking about you're having a tent outside the Civic Center opened up to do screening. Are you just taking walk up? You know, quite often, we got many places in our community that are serving food, helping to the homeless and so forth. Is that something that's going to be close by so you can have that contact, be able to do those screenings?
Um, a, a, again, I don't know if I can, I don't know if I have my head completely wrapped around exactly what you're asking. I will say that every organization that has a significant hand in serving that population in our community is involved in this process. Their, their stakeholders are at the table. So this isn't, this process doesn't exist separate from everything else that's happening in our community. So whether they're going to feeds at the Hope Center or the YMCA, or they're, they're learning...
I think we're all lost here.
Yeah.
What threw me off is when you said you, you were going to, I understand the facility, but when you said you're going to have tents set up outside of the Civic Center, I, I was assuming those tents were going to be for screening individuals, homeless individuals, if that's not...
Oh, yes, absolutely. So, so the, the, nobody can walk up to the Civic Center and just come in.
Okay.
It's not a hang a shingle and open the doors and people just come in. It's a referral facility from this, in this, this, they called it coordinated entry. So we'll have the Homeless Coalition, OYATI Health, all of those community partners will be involved in that screening process to get people where they need to go. If they need to go to our shelter, then they'll walk across the parking lot into our shelter.
Okay, good, I'm good.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd make a motion to authorize the temporary unbenefited FTE position for emergency management.
Motion by Drews.
Second.
Second by LaCroy. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Next, we'll have committee reports. Mr. DeSanto.
Attended my extension meeting last night via Zoom. We had a little difficulty at first getting used to how to get our faces and our voices all hooked together and presenting material at the same time on the one side of the screen. Meeting went well. We discussed the approval of the budget with the 10% cut. A lot of that 10% cuts coming from the fact that we, as the extension, are unable to do any of our programs at this point in time. And therefore, the funding for those programs is not necessary. We've also chosen to not continue forward with any of the purchases that we were planning on making. In the kitchen area, we've got a stove that's broken and needed to be replaced and, and a few other items there. We've got Buildings and Ground has come out and inspected the crack that's in the building, and we have a company coming out to repair that crack. They started the repair last week and should finish up this week getting that crack repaired. They found that, that, that the crack wasn't only in the back of the building facing the fairgrounds, but also in the front of the building facing the, the parking lot. So you're going to have to move quite a lot of items in order to get to those cracks and get them repaired, but they'll get, they'll get taken care of, which will extend the life of that building substantially. We had a little difficulty. We've got a couple of stoves in the kitchen there that we're not sure whether the county owns them or one of the associations that quite often uses the kitchen, or whether the extension purchased these. And the one, one of those in question is the stove that we're replacing, and we need to find out. It's broken, it can't be repaired. Can we just throw it away? Or do we have to figure out who owned that stove in the first place? So that's what we're discussing, and we'll, I think we'll have that figured out by our next meeting on, on May 11th. We're going to do some research there. I think Holly's been helping out with that a little bit. And the office, Kim is limiting the number of people that are coming in the office right now. There're not a whole lot of limitation that needs to be done because she's only seeing about two people a week and doing everything by Skype and that kind of stuff. But once somebody does come into the building, she wipes everything down after they leave and keep it clean that way. So that's pretty much the extent of, of the extension. It's not a whole lot going on because of this COVID-19 situation.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Drews.
Just a comment on that, Mark. In my previous life, what we did with items like that, that we didn't know who they belonged to, we just considered them a donation, and if they had no value, if they were broke, just discarded them.
Okay.
I think you could feel comfortable in doing that.
I feel comfortable doing that. I know we're not going to store it.
Thank you. Commissioner Ross Connect?
Nothing to report.
MPO meeting?
MPO meeting. It was not as successful as Mark's. I heard some voices and anyhow, it was, I'd say about 60% voices and 40%. We were there at the city administration building. We just talked about some of the road projects coming down the pipeline, and we gave our unanimous, unanimous support for the agreement between Boggs Elder and Pennington County as far as doing the work on Highway 1416 and Radar Road.
About Crow.
And I, I requested a, an approach designed for the Pearly Pit or Crow, and I see those came in yesterday, so...
I did see that last night.
So anyhow, that was, other than our Friday meetings and our Thursday meetings.
Thank you.
That's about all I got.
So I went to the Fire Service Board, and they had a meeting the other night, and that was about the 10% cut. So I don't know if you've got... was about the 10% cuts. So I don't know if you've got thank yous, but they thanked the board for those cuts being put back in there because they are crucial to their operations. So again, everybody said thank you very, very much. So Commissioner Drews.
Well, the, I haven't actually attended any meetings. I've been on a number of different conference calls with US senators and Congressman Johnson, so forth, but most of those calls, you know, have to do with the moment. And so information that you learned on Monday probably isn't even prevalent on Tuesday anymore at this point in time. So not going to spend a lot of time with that. We did get a notice from Mike Rounds today. He had talked about this on the phone the other day and was asked to try to give us an updated report on it. And this is relative to the United States Department of Agriculture's ag relief package. And this is contained in one of the stimulus bills, but most of the rules and regs have not been adopted. And so on his note, which is dated yesterday, he says that the Department of Agriculture recently unveiled details of its latest relief package for farmers and ranchers whose business has been negatively impacted by COVID-19. The proposal now needs to go through the official approval process in the federal government. But USDA's goal is to begin taking applications in May and for farmers and ranchers to begin receiving their relief package in June. The problem with that is, is that even trying to apply in May is you don't know what those rules and regs are yet. So they're going to be hamstrung by that to some extent. But he says broadly, the program does include 16 billion in direct payments for, to farmers and ranchers, 9.6 billion for the livestock industry, 5.1 billion for cattle, 2.9 billion for dairy, 1.6 billion for hogs, 3.9 billion for row crop producers. That probably isn't going to impact our row crop producers as much as probably some in other, in southern areas. 2.1 billion for specialty crops producers and 500 million for other commodities. And so, you know, hopefully the, the ag industry will be able to recoup some of their additional expenses or losses that they've incurred during this period of time too. So.
Questions?
Commissioner DeSanto.
In speaking with the representatives about that, the second phase, I guess it is of the bill that's coming up, were you able to get any information as far as what their concerns are with additional stuff being stuffed into the bill and whether or not if, if that additional stuff is there that doesn't have anything to do with COVID-19? Are they going to hold out?
That's a good question because they're now working on 3.5. There was a one, apparently a two, a three, and now they're working on 3.5 while at the same time there's four that's in the process of being worked on also. So the 3.5 one is the one that would provide some reimbursement to counties. They're estimating that that reimbursement for Pennington County could be up to as much as $10 million. Whether or not we would ever justify having had that expenditure or not, I, I can't, I can't say that. And we don't know what those justifications would even be because that's in 3.5, which is not even passed Congress.
Right. And the 2.3 was the egg that Dusty Johnson talked about last meeting that I told you about. I remember we did our update. So.
And then the other question I had is there's been some talk about legis, an emergency legislative session regarding the budget. Is that moving forward or has it been planned?
It's not, as far as I know, that's not been planned. That's not been a part of the last discussion that the governor had relative to that has said that potentially in June, I think it all depends on where we're setting as far as the virus is concerned at that point in time before that's going to be planned.
Okay.
It certainly isn't going to be before that and could be pushed back beyond, beyond that.
Thanks Gary.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to report on three different things, I think. Number one, the youth city council. We did our Zoom on that. I'll do that. But for the last month, month and a half, I've been videoing in or YouTubeing Sioux Falls City Council and the Rapid City City Council. So I'll give a little bit of a report on my take from those. In fact, I watched them last night. The youth council, they, they had their Zoom meeting and they did very well. One of the deals that they're going to work on is they sent out to the, the members was to reach out to, to other youth in their community and find out how the schooling at home is working for you because there was, there's apparently different teachers and different organizations are using different apps and some are easier than others and they're, they're not all the same. So that was one of their concerns. So they're going to reach out on that. And then they're working on their committees, getting their committees worked together. But there was also another item that they voted on was one of the things that they were talking about for their meetings was, and it started from the very beginning when they started up, was whether they should do the prayer before the meeting or, or something else. And in the conversation I mentioned to some, the youth that, what we do for Pennington County, how we do a moment of silence. So they had that discussion and they continued it on and they discussed it for about two meetings, three meetings. And at the last meeting, they, they adopted the, the moment of silence as a way for them to acknowledge their faith-based at their meetings. The reason why I wanted to bring up the Rapid City Council in Sioux Falls and why I've been watching them so much is the company that I work for has businesses in both sides of, throughout the state. And both decisions have effect on our company because we're essential, half essential, half non-essential, that type of thing. So those are interesting. So I've been watching them and it's very interesting because from one side of the state of what, you know, the prime examples last night, I'll give a little report on last night, city council, their discussion was on to continue the ordinance on, how do I say it? Not stay at home, but.
Shelter in place.
The shelter in place, the business closings. And so you, you watch and you listen to all the public comment and the concerns. And I've seen a change in, in the, the city council's demeanor from two weeks ago to, to last night as far as opening up businesses and looking at that and so forth. And Sioux Falls has done the same thing as we do. The city has a resolution of no gathering, follow the CDC guidelines. And I just wanted to explain to you a little bit about what's happening there with their guidelines. At their last meeting, they wanted to talk, they were talking about the shelter in place. And tonight there's going to be another meeting and from my understanding, the mayor's going to back off on that. But that's just from my understanding. But some of the discussions that happen for either our decision from what Rapid City did to Sioux Falls is, I can tell you Sioux Falls is now having, few meetings have been, the discussions have been going, what about our employees? You know, that's pretty much like the resolution that we do is what they have. And so they're having those discussions and the council members are worried, worried about, are they doing enough for that? Whereas in Rapid City, they're shut down. So their, their discussion is about opening up businesses. I mean, so two different, two different setups, two different sets of problems. You're going to have one or the other. And so, and I think that was one of the struggles last night at the Rapid City Council meetings was they felt that they don't really have the numbers to prove what they did was justified or if it did any good. And they're still waiting on a lot of those numbers.
I thought they, Lloyd, when I read it online, their proclamation, their, their mayor's proclamation was going to be do ordinance and they were going to do a shelter in place. Now they've changed that out of it now?
No, they have a meeting tonight. Are you talking Sioux Falls, right?
Yes, city of Sioux Falls.
From my understanding, this is all here, that at their last meeting, that's if they're, they're working on that ordinance and they had details to work out. And tonight they were going to have more discussions on it. They had one more meet, they were going to have a meeting on last Friday to get some information. And today's, my understanding through conversations with others is that they're talking about, he may be pulling back on the shelter in place.
Okay.
So it was said and there was work.
Yeah, he did an ordinance online, what they were doing.
My report is probably hearsay because it hasn't come out. It's just talk.
Well, the ordinance was online. That's what I'm saying.
They've got the ordinance and they're working on it, but it hasn't did the, the second reading or first reading either. So, so it's still in, not enforceable. But I just wanted to bring up the two differences. You know, Sioux Falls is, I mean, you're getting a lot of discussion about employee safety and the incentives for people working and ta-da-da. And so two different, two different resolutions or ordinances, but they both have problems. That's all, that's all I'm trying to explain is, and you know, and I reached out, our, one city council member had reached out to me and, and had concerns how much support they were getting in the, weren't getting in the community with their ordinance. And I could read the email I sent back. It was just my own personal belief is, I honestly believe that what that city, what our city council did, they did with the best decision that they had in front of them. And all our businesses, and I said at our last meeting, have stepped up and done so, so well. Would have, we, we've had the same effect if that ordinance hadn't have passed. How, how much longer would it have taken for some of our local businesses to do, be at the standards that they are now? So, but they're talking next Wednesday that with our Rapid City Council that they may be opening up some more. They're going to revisit their ordinance and are looking at ways that they, they could reopen. And then, and from the feeling that I got from the discussion in their meetings is the city council was open to some of that. But the mayor is working on some plans for that. So, but I just wanted to kind of, it's still kind of confusing how I presented it, but I wanted to say there are two different problems, but I've been watching both meetings and, and I think we're all in this together. But one thing I can tell you is, is after watching these meetings, you can tell not only this Rapid City City Council, but the Sioux Falls City Councils are, are highly stressed and, working hard to do whatever they've chosen to do.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
I want to bring up something that we were facing yesterday that maybe as a cooperative effort between the commission and the city council, that we could maybe have Shannon speak to the city council or have some sort of cohesiveness in our, in the changing the, the assessments. It, it appeared to me that, and I don't know because I wasn't there, but it appeared to me that they're making these decisions without any real scientific or, or, or a way to come about the decision that they're making. And then it's putting us at a disadvantage because of the differences in our, in our assessments. So maybe we could somehow arrange to get a little more cohesive in that area. So we're not basically getting the bat dropped in our lap.
I was on the city council. Lloyd was on the city council. Shannon's always there. But bottom line is, they may, I'll just give you, be nice, they may and we shall. So even if you have the facts and the information, they, they will still do what they do without being mean. Because again, makes them look good and then we have to come back and they'll just say, well, the county's going to change it anyway. So without being mean, they do have the facts. And he does explain that when we were on the city council. But it just politically looks good to lower peoples.
Madam Chair.
And some might know some of that. So some might have voted no, but, and then they only have to have, I think, three people, if I remember right. The whole board doesn't have to be there, do they? Holly, I don't think so. I think it's three. Congratulations.
Just a little follow-up on that because at one point I wanted to have an appraisal, a praiser put in on the Board of Equalization for our part because my first year on the commission, we were doing bargaining with the residents. We were splitting the difference. We were doing stuff like that. And, and so it's not just the city board that had done it. This board had done it too, in certain cases. We've gotten better. And, you know, I, I appreciate the board, how it went. And, but yeah, we've done it too at, at some points, but I always thought with the city board, you're absolutely right. It's, it's a tough deal. How do they come up with it? And the only reason why I knew the advantage of having a praiser on ours was Alan Hanks was on the last one that I attended back in 2010. And his knowledge was so helpful in making decisions that, that it's helped. Having the numbers man be able to run them as fast as he can is very helpful.
If they wanted to know, which he explained, Shannon will explain it to him. And then even on us, he'd try to, you know, he'd say something and he'd, he'd go back just like us. Okay, hold on a second. So let, let me explain this. And then he'd still do it anyway. It's like, he's from the county.
Well, one of the most, one of the most advantageous conferences that I went to was that assessors conference. I think I went to it for two years in a row. And I learned so much, but what it really did for me was it gave me faith in our Board of Equal, of our, of our assessors office and how thorough they are. They're as thorough as they can get with the, they're as thorough as they can get in accordance with what the homeowner will allow them to do. And, and their decisions are good decisions. And that's why you've probably seen me a little more apt to just go with what they have to say because going to those assist, that assessors conference really gave me a lot of confidence that they're, they know what they're doing and they're doing it right. So.
All right, guys. Number 20, Gary.
Vouchers. Chair has to abstain from one item on this. So I would ask for a motion to authorize payment for the invoice list presented in the amount of $3,130,506.78.
So moved.
Got a motion from Commissioner LaCroy.
Second.
A second from Commissioner DeSanto. Call over. Are all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
One extension, Deb Hadgook. Okay, items from the public. And next is a motion to go on executive session, SDCL 1-25-2-1.
So moved.
Moved by DeSanto.
Second.
Second by Drews. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Move to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Moved by Drews. Second by LaCroy. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Commissioners, I'd like to propose a motion for a promotion at our highway department to recognize and promote Fane Sunquist to a foreman position. The motion would be this. Motion is requested to promote Fane Sunquist to highway foreman at grade 19, step one for a biweekly rate of $2,080.80 effective May 17, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
By DeSanto, second by Drews. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I'd like to note also that that contract was signed in October 9th, 2019. And that's why that was moved forward today. So people know that we just didn't do this promotion as of this year after we said we wouldn't. The contract with Superintendent and Mr. Fane was signed again in 2019, 10/9/19. So, thank you. Motion to adjourn?
True. So moved.
Moved by Drews, second by LaCroy. All in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.